...by Commissioner Carr and the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise?
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us this day. Help us to make wise decisions for the county and the people and residents that live here, and help us through everything that comes at us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 13th day of May, 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrick, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lud.
Thank you.
Your buck.
Mr. Howard, do you want to take over? You want me to finish this?
Yeah, I can just, I'm just going to call up Carl, but this is a great, I think today's a great milestone as we continue to move this county forward in a, in a different trajectory. And I'm all about database decision-making, and this is a great day, I think, for Citrus as we continue to move, move these forward. And this is a great, great opportunity today to hear all the good, good work that they've done to date, and then try to get some decision points made today so we can continue to move this project forward. So I'll turn it over to Carl.
Chair Commissioners, Carlton Hall, Public Works Director. So today, we're going to go through the pavement management assessment that Mont McDonald put together for us. They're, they're going to have different speakers to kind of do a presentation. There's a slide. We're going to give some, some, really some decisions for you to decide on today, on how we move forward with road selections, what kind of weight we put on different roads. And as they go through that presentation, at any point, if you've got any questions, we have Walt here, Charles with Technical Services, as well as myself, to help give some information that the county, the county may have. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mont McDonald to come up. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Katia Delgado. I'm with company Mont McDonald. I'm the project manager for this project. I'm also accompanied by Aaron Gerber and Scott Stevens, I always say his name backwards, who are also going to be participating in the presentation we're going to be giving you guys today. If any questions come up during the presentation, by all means, feel free to ask them, or if you want to jot them down, whatever you feel comfortable with. We're going to be going through, we've been having a series of meetings with your staff, which we call the discovery sessions. We're going to be going through some of the topics that we cover during the discovery sessions, and like Carl mentioned, specifically some points of decisions that we wanted to bring to your attention, and maybe get some feedback from you related to those. So this is just a general overview. I'm not really going to go into the agenda for a moment, but we're going to start off with a real quick snapshot of what pavement management is, just so we can have, like, the ground basis and language for the discussions that we're going to have later on. So we want to start off, start off with a summary of your network. Right now, you have approximately a little bit over 1,900 centerline miles of paved roadway. Of that, approximately 84% are currently classified as local roads, according to the definitions that the, your land development code establishes. And the rest, 13%, is our collectors and 3% are terrials. Now, those roads are broken into, or will be broken into, the software system into what is called management sections. And so you're, in the system, you're going to have close to 15,000 management sections that will be analyzed by the software. So as you can, you can imagine, that's like a lot of information, that really the best way to do it is through a powerful analytical software. It's not something that someone can do, you know, on a spreadsheet, or kind of in their head. It's just too much and too many factors to consider to wrap your head around it. All that being said, and I think this is an important number for the board, is the replacement value of your network is considered to be $1.3 billion. And that would be to say, if tomorrow the county needed to replace your entire network, that's a part of the approximate value of, of your roadway network, $1.3 billion. So it is a substantial asset that you have and maintain and responsible for. And that's really what speaks to the importance of what pavement management is. If you think about your home, you know, the big investments that you make on a personal level, your home, your cars, you do a lot of small periodic maintenance activities to take care of those, change oil and filter, rotate tires. In your home, maybe you clean out the gutters, you pressure wash, and you do these things to avoid doing other costlier repairs down the road, right? Such as having to change out your transmission, or having to change your roof. So that is really the basis of what pavement management is. We're looking to do, implement strategies, treatments, and tools, so that we keep good roads, or keep roads in the best condition possible for as long as possible, given the resources that you have. And those resources could be time, can be money budget-wise, could be availability of contractors and materials. So all of these come into play. You might remember this slide from my previous, previous presentation, right? So when we have pavements, obviously new pavements are, right, in excellent condition, and, and at the root of pavement management is trying to keep those, those conditions as high as possible for as long as possible. Any, any treatment that we can do early on in that pavement's life helps extend that condition and the life of that pavement out into the future, and therefore it minimizes the cost of us maintaining that pavement over time. Now, pavements degrade, and right now, right, the, the conditions of your pavements are not in the same place. They didn't all start the race in the same position, right? So you already have some pavements that are in either fair or poor condition. Well, that just means that right now, there are other treatments that need to be done, or could be done, to either improve the condition of those roads, or bring those up to a satisfactory condition. But obviously, the further down we are on that curve, the more costlier the treatments are in order to improve the condition of those pavements. So how do we know where each road started the race? Well, we, if you guys remember, we, the, the county commissioned through our project a payment condition assessment survey that was done. It began in January, using the automated data collection vans that surveyed the entire network. And while they were doing that, they, they gathered a series of information, pieces of information and data that will build into the software to help us make the decisions. So one of, there are four particular parameters that were collected. One of them was cracking. All the cracks that were on the road, the lasers of these vehicles detected all the crackings that were on the road, and that information is being summarized into all of the maintenance sections. In addition to that, it also collected rutting. So rutting is, when you have those dips in the road, if you see that second illustration, it, it collected, it collects that as well. It also collected roughness, so how rough or how smooth the road is. And that relates to an index called the International Roughness Index, the IRI. And lastly, it also collected potholes, potholes and patches. Those four parameters in particular, we roll up into, we analyze and roll up into the software. And, and here, I want to just take a brief moment. Those are the four parameters that drive decision-making in the software. Those four parameters roll up in the software to give us a score, which is the PCI score, or the payment condition score, which is a term that I believe the board is familiar with. You guys already, you had a PCI score rating system that you used previously. And the reason we don't use the PCI to drive decision-making is because two roads can have a same score for very different reasons. And the reason behind that score could be either structural, or could be environmental, and the reason is what drives what is the best treatment to do. So generally, the PCI is used as a reporting mechanism, mostly because if I tell you there's a 0 to 100 scale to measure something, and I tell you on that scale, something's a 60, well, everyone can kind of wrap their brains around that, right? Well, 60 is not terrible, it's not the best, but it's not terrible. So it's easily relatable, no matter, right, what your level of technical expertise is. A lot of agencies also, instead of actually reporting the, the numerical value of the PCI score, will report out ranges, and that's a decision that you guys might want to make. So they'll say, for example, from 100 to 90 is excellent, or very good. And, and from 90 to 80 is good or fair. But those are parameters that each agency, it's, it's kind of arbitrary, so each agency really picks how they want to define those ranges of PCI scores. But what I, I want to emphasize here is the importance is, what drives decision-making isn't the PCI score. People will ask me, well, what score is this road or this segment? I can tell you the score, right, once we have the software up and running, when we do the analysis, but the score doesn't give you the complete picture. These four parameters are really what gives you the complete picture of what is happening with that road, and why it's in the condition that it's in.
Excuse me, Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. Are you taking questions as we go, or do you want to?
However, whatever works best for you, I guess.
In a previous slide, you had a photo of the pavement, and you had levels of the payment, that one?
Yes.
And then excellent, and then when you get to very poor, you see the cracking going through several layers.
Yes.
I was wondering, when you were scanning the roads, and you say crack density, which, which tells me that's probably the number of cracks in the road, does it also, can it measure the depth? So when you're saying cracking, is there a difference between some surface cracking, or can you tell if it's cracked all the way down through the pavement? And does that affect the score?
So Aaron will talk a little bit more in detail, but I will tell you, it doesn't go down in depth. However, what these vans do, and what the specification that the county adopted, which is ASTM E3303, does very well, is classify what type of crack that is. There, in pavement, there are different types of cracks, and they occur for different types of reasons. Obviously, the, and this system looks at the density, how much cracking is occurring in an area. Obviously, the more cracking in that area, the more severe the problem is, and points towards a, a problem in the base, like what you're seeing it towards the, the poorer section of the slide. That cracking has already penetrated down into the, to the structure. So when, when, in the decision trees that we'll be looking at later, when the, when that cracking indices is within those parameters, that it's very dense, you'll see that the treatment recommendations are on the heavy side of some kind of reconstruction, or maybe full-depth reclamation. So it does, although it doesn't technically scan down to the depth, because it's able to identify, and because of the density, it's able to identify the mechanism and say, this is, you know, something definitely structurally is happening there, and this is the optimal fix.
Okay. Yeah, I wondered, because it seems like if there's surface cracking, maybe the treatment would be different than if there's cracking deep with the pavement and breaking apart.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I got a question. Okay.
Commissioner Barrick?
What about if the pavement is missing, and instead you've got stones, and you have weeds growing up where there is no pavement? What category does that fit in? Because to me, I have a lot of roads in my district that are like that. And I also have roads that have slurry, which doesn't have that top coat, okay? And it just has pieces of stone that have been put in tar, and it's not a flat surface for anything.
Okay.
So what, what category does that get put in?
Okay. So maybe a couple of points that I want to get to on, on your question. Thank you very much for that question. Ideally, it would be good for me to see an example, but when we did the, when we met with staff to discuss what roads were going to be surveyed for the pavement condition in the county, we did account for, there are certain roads that you have in your county that are other types of surfaces that are not paved, okay? The ones that were surveyed in the county, and that will be analyzed in the software, are those that are asphalt, asphalt surface, the ones that are identified as micro-surfaced. And there's another classification in your network, that's, it's double-surface DB-SUR, I think it is, in your GIS database. When, when this, when the surveyors went out to the roads, right, they, they have your GIS inventory, and so when they went out, they also did a verification for us. So they'd go to each road on the, on the inventory that was provided to us by the county. And so they did come across some that, for example, were, when they got there, maybe the inventory said it was paved, but when they got there, it was lime rock. So they can't, they can't survey that road. So those were, those types of roads where it is an unpaved surface were not surveyed as part of this project. Those types of roads, then the county would have to make a decision of how you want to maintain roads that are unpaved.
Okay, so if it was originally tarred, or it had, it had original, and there are big sections missing, and they are down to stone and weeds, those didn't get surveyed?
If it was drivable without causing damage to the vehicle, because remember, this has, this vehicle has laser equipments that are pointing down. If, they made also a judgment call on some of the roads that maybe did have asphalt, but the asphalt was really busted up. If they felt that it was drivable without, you know, some, something potentially kicking up and affecting the equipment, then those roads would have been surveyed. But if it was not surveyed, and that, that survey, we have the centerline file from your GIS department.
Okay.
We can see if some of the roads that you have in mind are on that file or not.
Okay, because it is a bus route. Part, you know, the, the road is a bus route, so to me, it would have been surveyed, but I'll have to wait for later to see if it was surveyed.
I'm sorry, Scott Stevens, Mont McDonald. Assuming it was surveyed, one of the purposes of the survey is to compare all the roads together against each other. So if it's a, if it's a passable road, for instance, it would probably, the way you're describing it, be scored as a very low-scoring road, because you, you're describing things like, you have to make the decision, do we mow this road, or do we resurface this road? You know, it's really poor. So it's probably going to fall in that category on this slide where you're seeing the, the, we're at the end of the life of that road, and it needs to be reconstructed. And then we're going, we'll talk about it later, but we're going to balance all those needs for the reconstruction versus preservation, and try and match all those things together in an optimal plan for you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll still have to look to see if that road was actually surveyed, because you're saying some of them weren't surveyed.
Out of the 14,000 sections, we surveyed all of them, but there's a few handfuls that were lime rock, or so overgrown that they could not get the van down. But I don't know what my percentage is, but it's going to be 99% of the roads got surveyed.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Scott.
Chair. For the record, can I please get his name? Thank you.
Any other questions on that before I proceed?
Maybe you could pull the mic down a little bit closer? There we go.
Vertically challenged. Okay. All right, so let me see if I get us back to where we were. Okay. Went, went over. So in terms of treatment options that we've discussed with staff, some of these you are doing, others you have contracts in place for, but maybe aren't doing currently, but maybe are, are thinking of expanding to. So some of the treatments that we'll be talking about are basically divided into kind of four big camps, right? You have preservation, which has a goal of preserving the condition of the road in, in good condition. Here, we're talking about asphalt rejuvenation, we're talking about more, most of the surface coat seals, like micro-surfacing, slurry seals, fog seals, cape seals, those types of roads, which look to basically seal the surface of the road and keep moisture, and particularly here in Florida, from penetrating into, into our base, the base of the pavement and causing damage down the road. Then you have maintenance, right? The, the goal of maintenance is to do small activities that improve, have improvements to the role, so, to the road. So here, we're talking about patching, you know, and we're talking about crack sealing. Then you get, now we start to get in, into more costly repairs. When we talk about rehabilitation, the goal of rehabilitation, it's a major work that looks to improve the condition of the road. And this is right now the bread and butter of what the county is, is used to seeing. We're talking about your mills and overlays, for the most part. When a road is, is far gone, right, and, and it's past the point of even rehabilitation, then we're talking about reconstruction. And, and reconstruction could be, like, literally pulling out this road and constructing it new, or it could be full-depth reclamation, it could also be cold-in-place recycling or hot-in-place recycling. Wrong button. So real quick, just a couple of pictures of what these treatments look like. Here, we have crack sealing and patching. Ideally, also the patches, right? We, ideally, we want them to be, you know, nice-cut, squared-away patches, but we do recognize that agencies will sometimes have to do what we call throw-and-go. Then we have the preservation, the rejuven, asphalt rejuvenator, and the surface coat, seal coats that I mentioned to you. We have here pictures of rejuvenation in the bottom left. It goes on pink, and then it cures and becomes translucent, so you don't see anything on the road. It just goes down pink, so we can see where it's been laid down. And then we have micro-surfacing, and I believe a scrub seal in the bottom right picture. Rehabilitation, like I said, this, these are treatments that the county is well-familiar with, your, your mill and overlays, and your, and, and your straight overlays of roads. And then reconstruction, which mostly are full-depth reclamation and in-place recycling. Okay, so I'm going to leave Aaron now to talk a little bit about the optimization process and the analyses.
Yeah, thanks, Katia, and good morning, everyone. My name's Aaron Gerber with Mont McDonald, and I'm going to try to tie together some of the practical things that Katia just described into some of the analysis capabilities and things that you're trying to get out of the systems that you're trying, we're implementing right now for the, for the county. Starting off with this, this slide here on just some analysis methods, you know, we work with agencies all over the country, and they have a lot of different ways that they go about this process. And some of them, in some cases, are not planning in any, in any way, shape, or form. So what they're essentially doing is, someone has probably worked there for 30 years, and they just know the roads, and they just say, we're just going to pave this one, and that one, and that one. That person retires, and you lose that, that expertise, or you lose their knowledge, and you have to figure out, well, what am I going to do with these roads now? How do I figure out how to fix them properly? Most of the time, that's, obviously, that's considered fairly low sophistication. It's not really a very economically viable, because you really don't know anything about the whole network, you just know something about those roads that you're going to treat. And ultimately, it's become the most costly way to actually manage the network, is to not really plan for how to, how to fix them. The second level is what we call worst-first ranking, or worst-first prioritization. That's essentially the concept of just take, take your network, order it by the worst-conditioned roadway to the best-conditioned roadway, pick off the top until you've, until you've expended your funds. That process ultimately will lead you down a road of, of not being able to keep up with the deterioration rate of the whole network. So you'll spend up your money on those bad roads, they'll get fixed, but all those other roads that were fair or good condition will continue to deteriorate over time, and those will ultimately become more bad roads, and then you'll just be in this kind of continuous cycle of trying to, you know, chasing the tails, so to speak. The process that's currently being, being performed at the counties, we call, it's called density ranking, and what that actually provides is actually a, a process of defining where and when you're going to do work, with a little bit more sophistication in that process. There is someone who's going out and looking at the conditions of these roads, and figuring out just generally what's going on with those roads. But ultimately, as you kind of get down this scale here to, ultimately to optimization, this is what we're proposing for the county today. And the one thing about asset management, infrastructure management more than anything else, and especially pavements, is the, the question we have to answer is, I have a problem, I have, I have an objective I'm trying to achieve, and I'm subject to these limitations, my funding, my, you know, the conditions that I want this network to be in, whatever that may be. And how do we solve that problem? Well, that, that's ultimately what we're here to try to talk about today. At the end of the day, we're, we're going to get two main things out of the optimization of these, of the, when we run this analysis for this, in the software, we pull in the condition data that's been collected, we have all the inventory data, all that information that's going to be put in there. We're only trying to figure out what is an optimal work plan. If I have only so much money to spend, what is the right mix of projects around the county that I should be doing to maximize the whole performance of the network of the county? And so it's not really a focus on any individual road, it's a focus on the whole network, a network as a whole. You have this, again, it's a, you know, $1.3 billion asset, and we're trying to figure out how to best keep it in good condition. So you're going to get this list of projects, you know, what to do, when, where, and for how much. And that's really what the software's going to recommend for this, to get this big running list of projects out of it. But you're also going to get performance metrics. So, you know, things like, if you want to focus in on, say, PCI, if I just want to know, like, what today's PCI is, and I want to know what it's going to be 10 years from now, based on the funds I've got, the software's going to also project and provide those kinds of report summaries for you. So you can always sort of plan into the future that, well, today, we're spending, you know, $20 million a year, but it turns out we need to be spending $25 million a year. What are the impacts of not spending the money we think we need to keep where we are, or to improve from where we are? Those are the kinds of what-ifs that the, that the, you're going to have capability to do. So I started talking about optimization, but I want to talk about it in terms of what's called a benefit-cost optimization. Benefit is, we can define what benefit is, and I have come some slides, this sort of on the technicalities, but I have this, this slide to kind of just give you a sense of it. I have a road. When I first looked at it, it was, it was a, a poor-condition road, you know, let's just say it's a 30, PCI of 30, lots of cracks, and all these kinds of issues. Then I fixed the road, and one, after, after treatment, I expect that score to come back to roughly perfect. If I were to go resurvey that surface of the road, I'm not going to see any cracks, I'm not going to see any ruts, none of these kinds of issues that are occurring. Well, I can take credit, you know, in the analysis of the system for improving it by so many points. I went from a 30 to 100, I got 70 points, vertical improvement to the score. But not only that, I expect this treatment that I performed to last so many years before I need to do something again to it. In this case, we're defining, say, a 20-year life extension of that roadway. In our, in this analysis that we're running an optimization, our benefit is defined as the improvement score, the condition up, and the, the life extension, the time out. That area there, let me just click one more. Oh, I'm clicking, and I'm not getting, hang on. There we go. It'll probably go like three slides, sorry. What that looks like in, conceptually in the software is, we got, we have these deterioration curves that are being, being analyzed for every road in the network. When we hit a point there where we're going to trigger that treatment, let's say around a PCI of a 30, and I get my 70-point bump, and I get my life extension of 20 years, that area under that curve is what we're analyzing. At the end of the day, I've got thousands and 15,000, nearly 15,000 individual sections of road, they all have a curve like this from a treatment that's been recommended, and we're trying to maximize the total sum of those areas to get that value. You can also take that benefit, that base benefit, so to speak, and, and you can modify by any other priorities that you might have. So you might want to say, well, not only is it beneficial to do this treatment, but it would be beneficial if this treatment was done on a higher-volume roadway, higher traffic levels, maybe in certain areas of the county that are, you know, important, or have important facilities on them. So let's talk about that predictive analysis and multi-year planning a little bit, and I, I do apologize if it gets kind of into the weeds a bit, but hopefully, we, we can get through some of this. So I'll talk about pavement deterioration and multi-year analysis, especially how preservation is, is part of the process. All right. A lot going on in this slide, I was hoping it was, it was going to walk me through it. Let me just talk a little bit about what's happening in these analysis that we're talking about. So we first, the network is 14,000 individual records of, in the software. They're all starting at a different starting point. Each road is at a different condition. You know, you can imagine the ones that have, you know, the weeds growing up in them, or the low end of that spectrum, and there's the ones that you might have recently paved that are actually pretty good condition. So we have to figure that out first. And, and we, like I said, we, we've assessed that with, with the van survey to determine what the score, the scoring is, PCIs, what the cracking and the rutting and the other indicators are. We then can go through a process of assigning a treatment to meet the need. So kind of what Katia was saying, if, if I have a heavy amount of cracking on the road, one, there's certain treatments that are going to work, and are going to perform better than others, if, to fix that, that condition. That's what we call decision trees, and I'm going to dive into that a little bit here in a, in a bit. Each, once a treatment is selected, each treatment has a cost associated with it. So if I'm reconstructing a road, I expect the unit cost of reconstructing that road to be high. I have to dig deeper, I have to do more work, I need more material, more time associated with it, it's going to cost more to do it. If I'm just surface coating that road, it may be a lot cheaper to do, do the road. But it's about meeting the need at the time. Then, of course, once I have a treatment assigned, costs assigned, I can also then multiple, calculate benefits, and now I've got my benefits and my costs, and I can figure out what the analysis is going to do from there. And what I'm really trying to do is maximize that overall benefit to the network, to the, to the county. Some mixture of project recommendations are going to be the best fit, the best use of the funds, and that's really what we're going after. All right, a little bit more on, on that. So as I said, optimization tries to maximize the benefit to the network. So this is a very much, this is a bit of a, of a, of a math problem, but ultimately, it's a practical problem. You know, you need to figure out how to best spend the funds that you've got, and this is the process that you'd use to do that for a complex system. In terms of the types of treatments that might get recommended in the software, preservation, the lighter, the lighter treatments that are generally cheaper and have fairly, fairly decent life extension capabilities, will get, will get prioritized. They, they tend to be the ones that get selected the most. If you let the optimization kind of free-spend the money without too many constraints, it'll, it'll look to do a lot of preservation, as much as it can, keep the good roads good as long as it can, that's the best way to maximize performance benefit and condition. However, you don't always have a network that looks like that, and you, you are going to have to spend money on those bad roads, too. And that's the challenge that we have, is, is that balance. And so if we have to do a And so if we have to do a sort of a benefit-cost ratio kind of comparison, preservation tends to win, but we also tend to put certain kinds of constraints on the analysis. And some of the examples of that might be is I might put specific money aside just to reconstruct portions of the network that I know are very poor. I might isolate a certain amount of money and say, when you run the optimization, don't consider this money available for anything, it has to be done specifically for this kind of work. We can even dedicate the funds to committed projects. If you already have work on the books, things you intend to do into the future, we can put those directly into the analysis itself, and, and, and that'll allow you to kind of work around those projects, so it doesn't try to pick at a second time in the, in the I've got some examples here from another client, another Florida county client here that when we, we, we got the software and their data collection and everything stood up, all their decision processes stood up in the system, they asked us to run an analysis and show because they wanted to be able to show the benefits of doing this type of approach versus how they were running their program. They were at the time running a worst-first program, which again is that idea of just ranking it by worst to best and just picking off the top, and show us what truly is the quantified benefit of doing this process. So we actually had, we ran a comparison scenario, an optimization scenario, and a worst-first scenario, both using $15 million budgets per year for 10 years. And our idea was to, just to compare what's happening to, say, the PCI over that 10-year period, and, you know, what's it going to take ultimately to get us back to conditions where we were? So looking at some graphics here, and this was a few years back, but looking out into the future, one thing to note is that there is about a 12 PCI point increase, 32% increase in condition, just by taking those same funds that you used to use for worst-first and using them using an optimization approach. So that's a 32% increase, increase in condition. We didn't spend any new money, we just spent the money wisely, and that's all this is ultimately trying to say at the end of the day. Had they let the, continued down the route, path they were on, they would have continued to see that deterioration. Now granted, $15 million wasn't enough to keep them where they were, but the concept is still, is still appropriate depending on what your ultimate goals are. Another key component, and I'm going to point to that, the last bar to the right there, 2027, the difference between the red and the blue bar all the way down at the end there, that difference is about $25.4 million. Now, the concept on this graphic is called backlog, and what we're talking about is, when you fix roads, you don't fix other roads. You know, you have so much money to go around, what roads are you going to choose and why? The ones you didn't choose, they continue to deteriorate and they, and they still have a cost associated with them. Backlog is the sum of those costs. So if you think about what you did fix in a year, what you didn't fix is the sum backlog. Every year it changes depending on deterioration and the treatment needs and all those other factors that go along with it. In the case of optimization, we were able to show that if you just spent the money this way, this is the way you chose your treatments as opposed to the worst-first ranking, you're able to save $25 million by the end of the 10-year cycle. So that's a substantial amount of money to ultimately be able to, to show someone that we are saving money ultimately by making better choices. The other scenario they asked us to run was, on, on the flip side was, well, how much money do I need to meet my current condition? And they kind of had a general sense it was around $25 million, and we, we ultimately came around it was about $26 million. But we compared that original $15 million scenario to a $26 million scenario, and then we also wanted to have another sort of, you know, bit of a, something to shoot, shoot darts at a bit is, what if we cut the budget? And what happens to the, to the network when that occurs? And so ultimately, what we came away with was, again, you could, as you can imagine, the PCIs, you know, the, the top one, 26 million, kept the PCI generally at the same condition throughout the 10-year lifespan. The others, obviously, were down lower. Each of these is an optimization scenario, so now we're just comparing optimization against optimization. But the real big kicker was ultimately was the backlog. If I spent money, if I had enough funds to properly fund the network in addition to spending it wisely, I can really drive down my backlog. And you can see here that the backlog ultimately for the $26 million scenario ended up being around $91 million in the 10-year period. You're never going to eliminate your backlog. I mean, I think that's a kind of an unreasonable analysis because there's so much need out there, but you can minimize it or you can control it with good, with good treatment recommendations. At the end of the day, just the pure return on investment from having spent the money, enough money to meet those needs, we saw a $38 million return on investment just by doing that. And so it's, it's kind of some math between the, the difference between the $15 million scenario, the money that's, additional money that's actually spent, and the remaining backlog gives us about a $38 million savings. All right, so any questions at that point?
Commissioner Fagan.
Yes, I do have a question. When you say we'll never get rid of the backlog, so even in your estimation at $26 million, we'll always have roads that are in deplorable conditions? Or we'll just always have roads that need to be done that, like what, what does backlog mean and at what level are we always going to have roads? Because I was thinking, when I looked over your slide presentation before you presented, that 26 million, once we catch up, would get us there, obviously until costs rise and things like that.
Right. A lot of that stuff is part of it. So obviously inflation has a big, big impact on that. I mean, what we can pay for today may not be able to be paid for in the future, so we have to account for that in the analysis as well. And so we'll lose ground just by the pure cost of things. But we'll also lose ground because some things you're just going to miss the opportunities. You know, you're just not going to have enough money in any given year necessarily to, to fix what's needed in that year. And everything you don't fix just deteriorates another year, and what might have needed a preservation today might need a rehab in, in eight years. And so what was, you know, $8 a square yard to fix now becomes $40 a square yard to fix, and there's big jumps that can occur. It's all, it's, it's all estimates, right? We're, we're, we're approximating or predicting a need. At the time, you'll be able to assess exactly what the needs are on those roadways, but in the moment, we're able only just to say what we expect will occur based on what's set up in the analysis.
So when you're in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
In your analysis of the $26 million, once we, once we get to a more caught-up position, I'm assuming we shouldn't have deplorable roads anymore? We should just be at a level of maintenance where things might always need a little bit of maintenance?
It depends on exactly how you spend that money. Roads that are already bad, if you don't fix them, will stay bad. And so some roads will be, just be so expensive on an individual basis, they require their own special funding just to get them into right performance. In this case, we're talking about how do we take a sort of a maintenance program, you know, a maintenance and preservation program and spread that money as far, far as we possibly can. Maybe you get to those, those really bad roads, but I have some examples of, of, of clients who just don't have enough funds available, even $26 million, which sounds like a lot of money, just can't catch up. I mean, if you looked at that, if I go back to that slide, just quickly, because I think it's an important point. I don't know how many back I'm going to get. At the end of the, at the end of that 10-year period, I spent $26 million to get my PCI at an average of a 69. It didn't go to 100 after I spent $26 million. To get to 100, I needed to spend, you know, $100 million. I mean, it could have been quite a lot more money. So you're going to hold some amount of roads in some conditions that you may not like, but it's just the balance, balancing act that you play. It's, some are going to be in, you're going to try to maximize the good ones as long as you can, you'll try to chip away at the bad ones as much as you can, but at the end of the day, you're always going to have some that are sitting in some condition that's somewhere in the middle there, and there's going to be costs associated with that.
Okay.
Yes?
Commissioner Barrett.
Okay, so what you're saying is you're going to, we're going to spend most of our money on preventive maintenance, like in a factory, you do preventive maintenance all the time. So we're going to take roads that have semi-cracks and we're going to put some sort of coating to, to bring them up to 100. And then the roads that, in other districts, and I'm sure in all the districts, we have roads that are really, really bad, they're going to be put on the back burner, and that's where we're going to get these carried, it's over, carried, it's over, it's going to get worse and worse and worse. How do we tell our citizens that their road is going to get done 20 years from now because we're going to a new system that does preventive maintenance? So if you've got a couple of cracks on your road, you're going to get a new coating on it, and you're paying the same taxes as the guy on the road with a couple of cracks. How do we do, address that?
You set aside funds specifically to attract, attach, to, to attack those.
So in other words, we should be setting aside 90% to do that and 10% for the preventive.
I think the, I think the breakdown would come out of recommenda, I mean, if you use the product for what it's for, that breakdown of percentage would be, would be what you'd be analyzing.
But what you're saying is, it's like a factory, you do the preventive maintenance, that's what you're telling us to do, preventive maintenance. That's not really going to make our citizens very happy.
I understand. That's a, that's a classic challenge that people don't quite get their head around the, the concept of keep the good roads good, if anything that you own. I mean, it's, it's kind of like, you know, like the, the deck in the back of my house, if I don't keep staining it, it's going to rot. In fact, I had to replace a bunch of boards because I let it rot, you know, I let too many years get by on one part of it, I had to replace it, and then I seal coated the whole thing. It's the same kind of thing. I'm trying to avoid you getting to that point where you need to do that. You already have roads that are down in those conditions, you're going to need to dedicate funds to that subset of the network ultimately to get them up, so you can start to preventive maintenance them.
Now, are you going to give us a percentage of how many of our roads are in that area?
Oh, yeah, that, that's coming on, that'll come with the, the condition survey will tell you exactly what each sort of, what the conditions are of the roads. We'll be able to tell you based on the information that we give here and through the conversations we've had with, with county staff is, here's the recommended treatment that should be done to that road, and here's the cost associated with doing it. So you'll have, at least at your fingertips, what it's going to take to get there. And so if, if the public asks, you know, well, why isn't my road getting done? You can say, because it turns out it's going to take hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, and we need to figure out how we're going to meet that need.
And, and you're going to be the one that tells the citizen, you're still paying your taxes and you're not getting your road done for another 20 years?
Yeah, I pay taxes too. I mean, it's the same thing. I, it's a challenge we all face, you know, and, and, but in this process, this, this is an ability to actually be able to see what the needs are and be able to convey that to folks so they can at least get their head around what the needs really, really ultimately are.
Thank you.
Pardon the interruption. I did want to clarify a couple of things. Number one, Commissioner Finnegan, just to clarify, what you're seeing right now on the screen is an example of a neighboring county. It is, we're not saying that Citrus County, your, to maintain your PCI is $26 million. We will know that this fall when the system is up and running and we're able to run the analyses.
Thank you for that clarification because I thought you were estimating that for us.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. So I just wanted to clarify, this, this is an example from a, from a neighboring county.
I understand.
And then addressing Commissioner Barrett, your, your concerns, so in that neighboring county, they had a similar situation, right? You have roads that are already in bad condition. You can't just tell your constituents, well, I'm not going to do your road because the software is saying we got to, you know, take care of these other roads. So in the analyses, that county, and this is our decisions again, that it depends on the agency, how you want to manage your network. The agency, the agency said, we're going to dedicate, I don't remember the percentages, I can get those for you, but they said, we're going to dedicate, every year, we're going to dedicate X percentage to preservation and X percentage to rehabilitation and reconstruction. And then they had us run the analysis. What happens to the network if we do that? Those are what Erin was referring to as constraints, right? Where, where, the software is going to do what it's going to do, it's going to try to give you the best mix, but we recognize that there are practicalities in the way we do business that maybe go beyond that optimization, right? Real, real-life examples. But we're able to show you what happens if we do those, if we take those roads, right? If we, if we go down the line and we say, we're going to dedicate X percent to preservation and X percent to rehabilitation. So we're able to show you both comparisons and then you can make an informed decision. And I think that's really where the importance of the system lies. We're going to be able to have the tools to make all of these what-if questions, show you the results, and then you can make an informed decision of how you want your network to look into the future.
All right, I'm going to ask you a question that I have no idea if you can answer me. For the sake of argument, let's say that there's a brand-new house, identical, it's built 2024, and it's built on a road that's new, pretty, pristine, whatever, and same house is built on a road that's in poor condition. What's the percentage of, that creates that value for that house on, because the one that's on a new road is on the market for $300,000, and the one that's on a poor road is at $250,000? And those are just hypothetical numbers. Do you have any idea what the condition of a road, what the value or a percentage that it applies to a house value?
I don't know. I've not come across real estate values associated with the pavement condition. Usually, I mean, what we normally deal with is, if you're building a new, a new house on an existing road, the road typically doesn't get repaved with a new house that gets built, but if a new, a lot of new houses get built, a lot of times it's requested that the whole road get repaved at the same time and try to improve that. I, I understand it's probably a challenge that individuals have is, you know, I just built this new house and it's on this, this poor road. That might be an opportunity for you to, to look at those locations and say, I'm going to, I'm going to look to try to improve those roads down the road. I, I'm going to put, I'm going to set aside funds, try to improve that condition of that roadway into the future. That's the kind of stuff we can at least do is say, what would be the impact of say, what if we just hard-code, say, we're going to do this roadway as part of our program in 2027? You know, we're going to just do this project. We can at least say what the impact will be to your budgets and your conditions and all that stuff for the whole network, but what it, what it really means for the individual house, I, I really don't have any, any sense of that.
Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Barrett.
How about you had the road repaved last year? They built a new house on it, and while doing it, the drivers on these lovely trucks put big dents and big cracks in that new road. How does that, you know, because you just did the analysis now. Do we do this analysis every year so that we can see where the roads got messed up? Because I mean, you're buying a brand-new house on a road that just got paved, and because the, you know, the blow-off, you know, made ruts and holes and took out sections of the road, you know, how do you, how do you address that type of thing?
Well, we do recommend, this, this isn't a one, a one-and-done process. I mean, managing the infrastructure assets should be something that is a continuous process. So whether you do a, a new survey every year, every few years, whatever your timeline is, you have to decide when you want to do it again, you are going to monitor the, the network condition over time, and you're going to reassess based on that, what's, what's changed. We know it will change with time, and we know that roads, unless you're fixing them, they always deteriorate. Heck, even sometimes you fix them and they, they don't come out looking all that great. So it's, it's a challenge that you ultimately have. You need to reassess them from time to time. If you, if you wait 10 years to reassess again, you might be in a situation where you didn't know of some of the problems that were occurring, say, without the public telling you where the problems were. So recommend, say, every, every few years you do a reassessment, determine where you are, and you sort of track, you know, you know, predicted versus actual. And what you get out of that is two things. One is, is you, you have a sense of what the new, new funds needs are, and the other is, is that you'll, you'll have a sense of, of, of where to, where you're really going to focus your project work and be able to build new deterioration models from the data that you have. So we predict the assumption of how these roads are going to deteriorate through time based on just what our expertise is, what kind of we've seen in other counties, if you don't have the data. If you have the data, the data drives the deterioration. You can see how something has changed through time every time you assess it. Once you can draw that line, now your predictions for your future needs get that much better. So this should be kind of an ever-evolving, improving process, you know, as, as you go through it.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you.
As always, always an excellent presentation from you guys. That's why I haven't really had any questions. Easy to follow and very well done. So I'm going to follow Commissioner Bays throwing a curve ball at you in terms of what taxpayer benefits are. So in a world of very imperfect choices, which is sort of the life of a commissioner, right? Trying to figure out the best way to benefit the most people. I believe Commissioner Bays agrees with me on this. I have come to the conclusion over time that we really ought to move to an MSBU system for, instead of ad valorem. That way you get, you get your road paved right in front of you and you pay for it over 10 years. And then, then in 10, another 10, 15 years later, it, it happens again and everything's fantastic. We have private roads, we have Lime Rock roads, and we have stopped accepting roads for maintenance. All of that is driving quite a bit of inequality in what people are paying in their ad valorem taxes, right? So if you pay for road maintenance, then you should probably get road maintenance, right? My fear is that in all of this, when we're doing lots of small preventative maintenance, then that throws MSBU out the window, I think. And obviously, we have a financial consulting firm that helps us with all of those different imperfect solutions. Have you come across anything like that, that you can shed any light on that?
Yeah, we had a, I know one of the counties in Florida that we had worked with a few years back was, it was a, it was quite an important topic for that board as well as how exactly are we going to fund this need? And, and where's the money going to come from? How it ultimately gets done is really not in, in, in my, in our purview. What we really do is analyze the funds you give, however you give them and determine what the best use is. When I say that ultimately, I just, I think we're chatting a lot about preventive maintenance and preservation and those sorts of things. It's attractive to the analysis, but you ultimately get to decide at the end of the day how the mix of the funding is really going to go towards certain types of work. If you already have a lot of roads in poor condition, they're going to, you're going to need to do a heavy treatment. You're not preventive maintaining any of those. So they're going to be done regardless. So there's always going to be a need out there for heavy treatments and there's going to be a need for the, the tax dollars to make sure that gets done. The preventive maintenance, all it really does is, you're really just trying to stretch the life of the existing road as long as you can. If I, as a taxpayer, if I knew that you didn't have to do a heavy treatment again for a long time, that would make me happy. I mean, I'd rather you pay less funds and do a lot more roads than, than to do a single road that's going to repair. And I understand that the, the unique personal part of that, which is, that's my road in front of my house. And that's the challenge you ultimately, that you all do fight, I think, is, is what do we do about that, that kind of an issue? I think the only thing you really say is that you have a, you know, 1,400 mile network to manage. And the, the, the best use of those funds is what you're really attacking. If you have individual situations where you have to do that work, certain, certain kinds of heavy work, you just go ahead and, and see what the implications are and quantify that. You can actually quantify the cost of changing direction from one approach to another out of these analysis. So hopefully that kind of at least gives somebody a sense of why you would want to do preventive maintenance, even if it were in the face of a, of a certain process that you'd use to fund the program. That to see that at least what I'm trying to do is maximize the, the overall condition.
Well, I have some thoughts on maybe how we can navigate that, but I'm going to hold my fire and do some research before I open my mouth.
And let's, you know, let's get the, get this thing stood up so we can, you know, start running some scenarios. And so you guys can actually have some, some, a, a look at some real information, real data in front of you, make some decisions from that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay.
Carry on.
We are, we're transitioning into a, a look at some, under the hood a bit of some of the things that we've discussed with county staff on the settings in the software. So, you know, this isn't like a canned program that just you get what you get and good luck. It's, the idea here is we're trying to create a program that fits the needs specifically of Citrus County. And we have this with every county we work with, every agency we work with, it's the same thing. We go through the same process of determining what is your business policy? What do you want to actually be able to do with it? And so that kind of starts its life in this concept of decision trees. So when we talk about what treatments we're going to do, when and where, we have to start at, well, what would be the right treatment to do in that condition? So I still have not figured out why the tree is upside down in this, but it's, but I get the, in concept, it's, you know, the, the idea of our trees are you, you have a trunk of the tree. It's like you're attaching a bunch of, of branches and limbs and leaves to a trunk of a tree. And all of those limbs and leaves are ultimately leading to a final destination, a final treatment ultimately that gets described. So we have this concept of like a root node on the right hand side there and it kind of branches down and down and down until we finally get to a result for that need. And so what we're trying to really capture here is your, is your decision-making process. What do you want the system to do? What would be the treatment that, you know? We're trying to use our judgment based on our, our knowledge of how pavements deteriorate and, and our experience with other, other agencies and certain materials you might use on the roadways. But ultimately, it comes down to what you all would feel comfortable delivering as a program to, to the public, you know? And, and the further away you get from the analysis and the software, this optimal, optimal sort of approach, you're getting into maybe a little bit more of a practical result, but you're also getting further away from the most optimal use of the funds. And you have to be able to sort of balance that. We do need, there will be quite a few things that you might want to make decisions on. Like I, I want to make sure that this section of the county gets special priority. Well, we need to make sure we have data associated with that, that, that location to be able to do that. So a lot of what we're doing is driven by whether we have the data in the, in the systems that we're, that we're using. And that really comes down to the, to the GIS, the, the underlying inventory information that we have for the road network. And we have talked through quite a bit of that and I'll show you some examples. So the trunk, so to speak, of this tree is, is basically the surface type. Whether it's an improved surface type or an unimproved surface type. And so you can see here are, are so-called improved surface types are things that have been paved or have been seal coated or something, and the surface is actually a hard, ridable surface. An unimproved surface is something like it, whether it's unpaved or lime rock, it may be, may be grass. I mean, there's some other things that may be happening there. Obviously, a road that formerly was a paved road that is now a grass road is just a poor-conditioned paved road. And we're looking for those in the data. You know, that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to identify. Once we get to this point, we're attaching our branches to the, to the trunk. It's a little small. Essentially, what we're looking at is we have to look again into cracking, rutting, ride quality, roughness, that, that concept, and, and things like potholes and, and other kinds of deterioration that's happening on, on the surface. We have individual trees that are associated with those kinds of performance or those kinds of, kinds of conditions. So in this example, this is the cracking tree. This is like, based on crack data we have for that, those roadways, each road of the 14,000 unique sections of road in the network are going to pass through this tree. And wherever its current condition cracking is, it's going to run down a branch. And so essentially what we have is, we're looking into things like, is it a flood, flood-prone road? Is, does it currently have soil cement base or not? Does it, is it currently have a curbed section or not? Is it currently micro-surfaced on the surface of it or not? So these kinds of various bits of information, they supplement the actual condition itself because, just because it's one condition, if I have a roadway that's one condition but has soil cement, the treatment may be different than a road that doesn't have soil cement. So we have to be able to test each of those to get to our final recommended, recommended treatment recommendations. So I'll leave that up for a second if any, any questions specifically on that one.
Commissioner Davis.
What is the difference between soil cement and soil cement? Because there's a yes and a no on flood prone.
Yeah, i- if I, if I'm flood prone, no, and I have soil cement, the difference I see there is if I have, if it is flood prone, I have to do, and it's soil cement, no, I have to do a mill OGM and an HMA overlay. So the difference is the treatment recommendation ultimately is a little different. OGM is an open grade, like kind of a, a center, a center mix, a kind of a stress absorbing mix.
I'm being a little nerdy, nerdy here.
Nerd-ing out a bit, yeah.
I figured flood prone then would just have flood prone soil cement, but what about other types of builds that are flood prone?
So flood prone in this case is, is there's, in the data, in the, in the, in the inventory that we have, there's some flag in there that says, this road we know just happens to have flood prone issues. So we, we actually don't know a whole lot about that specific information. You all, basically, your, your, your staff will know where those locations are and that's how they'll track that in the data. A flood prone soil cement location may not perform like a, a not, non-flood prone soil cement location. I mean, because this, that soil cement can be ultimately, like you said, if we're going to nerd a bit, out a bit here, it can start to undermine and there could be some other issues that can occur and the treatment may be different. Or the time to meet the treatment may be sooner, which is more likely the case. Did that get there?
No, I think you're, I think the flow chart is a little, maybe not as clear as it should be there, but that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly work on trying to improve the, the, the settings there. I mean, I, I think the only difference between those two branches is one late leads to a mill OGM HMA and one just leads to a straight mill and HMA. Any other questions? And so as I said, this kind of, oh, okay, we did have a blow up. Okay, good. So this is the kind of the upper portion of that, if you wanted to look into that detail. And then, so this is kind of like the poorest condition roads. If I have a score like a fifth, under a 50, FDR is a reconstruction. And you may have a lot of your recommendations out of the, out of the gate, be a lot of reconstructions. And so you, don't be surprised if the, the first backlog number you get is, is very high, you know? That, that's really what you could possibly see. But as the conditions kind of get, you know, a little, a little better, the treatments get a little lighter, they become a little bit more, a little cheaper, that, that sort of thing. And as I get to the other side of this, this tree, the, the, sorry, I'm struggling with my clicker here. You can see now as we get into good conditions, you know, fair to good conditions, you know, 65 to 85, greater than 85, we're into like more preservations or lighter mill and overlays, those kinds of things to, to try to preserve or improve without having to go and reconstruct the base of these pavements. If I'm above a certain amount though, I might not have to do anything. And that's the, that's why you always hold somewhat of a backlog also is, we're basically saying there's some amount of condition, you know, poor, some amount of condition, cracking or whatever, that we're allowing on the roads at any given time. You just can't stop every crack, you know, kind of thing is what we deal with. IRI is a much simpler process. IRI being the International Roughness Index. So the roughness index here is if it's just, if it's rough or not. On the, on the rough side, we check what the current speed limit is on that roadway. Essentially, that's, I believe, posted speed limit or something along those lines. The challenge is having the data for it. Just because it says 30 miles an hour doesn't mean somebody's not going 50, you know? That's a, that's a challenge we all face. But the difference is whether or not we just mill and overlay it because it's a higher speed road. A higher speed road likely is a higher volume road in the county. And so it's, in other words, is, is not going to be in a neighborhood kind of setting. It might be more of like a collector or an arterial type roadway. And we don't normally track roughness. This is a kind of a, a, a thing that happens at local government settings is we might collect roughness on the neighborhood roads. But a lot of times a road, if you're going, if it's 25 mile an hour roadway and you're, and you're driving on it and it's rough, it's not as much of a challenge to the driver as say, maybe just the pure condition of that roadway is. If it's a high-speed roadway and it's rough, you're going to know it because you're going to feel it as you're driving. And, and that's kind of the, the challenge that we have. And of course, a road can be rough for a lot of reasons. It could, it could have potholes, it could have other ancillary distresses and conditions that occur. In terms of rutting, we're, again, we're, we're focused on, and once we get to about a, about a half inch of rutting, I mean, that's, that's fairly substantial, but it, it's, it's trackable in the data that we have. We're going to start looking to like, if it's an isolated area that's rutted, like you see like at an intersection. A lot of times you'll see a, road's fine for two miles, but then you get to the intersection and it's all shoved and rutted and all those sorts of things. You may just need to patch just that intersection to improve the whole net, the whole condition of that roadway. Just that one little area is causing the problem for that score. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be sort of looking for those kinds of, that kind of data in the system that, in the data that we get and tracking the treatments needed for that. If it's a long section of road that's just, just purely rutted, we're likely going to need to mill and overlay the whole thing and try to improve the rut condition. And then on potholes, you know, essentially, if you have a pothole, you've already kind of lost the battle, you know, kind of thing. And, but, but we are going to look for like a percentage of the area of the pavement that has potholes. If I have small, isolated areas, maybe I can just patch them. But if I have a persistent problem of potholes for the whole roadway, I'm going to recommend reconstructing it. I mean, ultimately, you've lost your, your, your surface, you've lost the base of that, of that, of that pavement. And then the last one we have is beyond just pure condition, is just age, the time since last time you did something. And so here we actually look at things related to speed limit more for safety reasons than anything else, is we want to make sure we don't create any situations of, of, of low skid resistance and those sorts of things. But we're tracking essentially construction work that you complete over time on the network. We're tracking those conditions and how they're changing. And then we're recommending based off, off of the last time you did something, what the next preservation should be in time. So basically, just proper timing or optimal timing of a, of a preservation treatment. So there's a couple of different specific rules in there and, you know, I just, I let you guys kind of absorb that just for a minute. But this one's a little bit more harder to get your head around than like, say, the, the pure condition ones. Any questions on any of the decision tree stuff? Okay. I'm going to, I think I'm, now I'm going to turn it back over to Katia and she's going to talk about another concept is just the network priority multiplier. The idea that you're going to create some kind of hierarchy or prioritization of the, of the network.
Thank you, Erin. I will say on the decision trees, once you, I, I think you guys have the presentation, you look into them in a little more detail and you'll see the end results, right, at the end of each one of those branches. The treatment selection that staff is recommending right now on those, those decision trees, you'll see that they didn't really take them lightly. They, they are recognizing there are certain needs of your network. And so you'll see that a lot of the treatment recommendations are on the rehab to reconstruction. And, and obviously where it makes sense, there are, there are recommendations for preservation. Also, I want to point out, those decision trees are not set in stone and they, they grow, being a tree. They can grow and morph and change over time as maybe new technologies come into play or you try different treatments in other areas and recognize that maybe it's not the right fit for your county and you don't want to do them. Or you maybe tried something as a pilot project and you said, wow, that really does work, let's do more of that. So your decision trees will also grow and modify over time. And even as more data comes in, as Erin said, this is a, it's a continuous process. Your system will continue growing. It's not like what we did today, that's it and it's done. Your system will continue to grow. With that, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the network priority multiplier. This is a concept that was used by a, a neighboring agency and other agencies have adopted over time where we've built into the system this concept of there are certain roads that have an additional, we want to give them an additional priority in the analysis, whether it's because of the functional classification or because they have services that are significantly important, either in terms of safety, commerce or social importance, right? So this agency came up with this equation, which is nothing more to say, we're going to give a certain percentage of importance to a segment if it is a certain functional classification, and we'll, we'll look at the details of those right now. And we're going to take into account certain facilities that might be located along that road or the purpose of that road to add additional priority to that road in the analysis. So this equation that was developed by this agency and it's, and it can sort of be used sort of like a tiebreaker. Maybe at the end of the, at the end of the analysis, these two roads come in sort of comparable in terms of the benefit that Erin discussed earlier, right? They have comparable benefits, but this, this multiplier, this priority multiplier, maybe this one has a fire and emergency station on it versus this one. So you, you're, you recognize that you want to keep a good condition going into that fire station, right? So that one just gets like a little bit of a more bump with this network priority multiplier. The, the way the equation was sent and you'll see that, you're going to see some numbers highlighted in yellow. Those numbers are as this agency developed them, right? This was the criteria that this agency decided to set up. So in the case of the functional classification, they decided to give 60% of the weight of the, of the result to the functional classification and 40% of the weight to the priorities, the priority elements that were present on that road. So that is one point that maybe, you know, the, as a county, you guys would want to decide. Maybe you want to, you know, have it 50/50 or you, or you're satisfied with it being 60/40. That's, that's a point for you guys to discuss. When we, now we look, we're going to look at the functional classification part of that. Remember I said, in, in the case of this agency that developed this equation, they decided to give 60% of the importance to the functional classification of the road. The, the functional classification then, each, for each functional classification type that they had in their inventory, they assigned a multiplier. And they recognized the importance of their arterials and collectors. And so in, again, you'll see yellow numbers, these are the numbers that were adopted by this agency. They assign a higher multiplier to collectors and arterials than they did to local roads. In the case here of Citrus County, we have inserted here the local collector concept, which are local roads that you currently have classified as local in your inventory. But over time also, your, the functional classification of some of your roads have morphed and have changed as you've had build outs in certain areas. And so some of these roads maybe were originally just kind of local rural roads, but now they really are functioning more of a, at a collector level. And if I, if I, if I remember correctly, I think the county is currently undergoing a process of reviewing the functional classification of your roads. But the, but your staff wanted to recognize the importance of those roads. So we added a field called the local collector road. And so these right now are the recommended multipliers assigned on basis of functional classification. Okay, all right. So what the equation will do is it'll take that multiplier, let's say it's a collector road. So it, the multiplier is three, multiply it, if, if you remain with the 60% weight, it'll multiply that three by 60% and that'll give you the first part of the score for the functional classification. The second part of the equation. The second part of the equation is the priorities, right? And there are different facilities, again, thinking of the safety, commerce and social functions of our roads, right? There are different facilities that might be present on a road segment that contribute to the priorities that the agency was recognizing. So in this case, we have things like hospitals. Is it an evacuation route? Is it a flood-prone area, particularly because FEMA, I don't, I remember after which storm, but they changed some policies where you really have to demonstrate that you've done everything possible to keep roads in flood-prone areas in, in good condition and that you're maintaining them. So we're trying to recognize that and also assign it a priority. If you have fire or EMS facilities on them, if you have law enforcement centers on them, public shelters, schools, all the things, all of these are things that, that were recognized as having a potential priority and then having a multiplier associated to them. If you see in the case of, of this, and again, the numbers are in yellow just because this, these are the numbers that were adopted by the neighboring agency but are subject to what the board and, and your staff, what you guys feel are, are the areas that you want to focus on. the board and your staff, what you guys feel are the areas that you want to focus on. If you look at public, in the case of public shelters, they recognize that public shelters have an important role, they had it in their data, right? They were able to say, we have a shelter here, here, here. But because the shelters were used sporadically, you see that the multiplier, they just assigned a value of one to it, versus, let's say, for example, an evacuation route, they really wanted to focus on those, and so those have a higher multiplier. So what would happen is, let's say, for example, a road has a fire station on it, and it is an evacuation route. So that would give it a multiplier of the sum of three, in this example, right, for the evacuation route, plus the fire station, which is also three, so that's six, multiplied by the weight, the 40% that we talked about earlier. And so that's how, that combined with the functional classification part of the equation is what will give that road the network priority multiplier. So each road will go through the system, and in addition to all the benefit costs, the benefit calculation that the system does, will also have an associated NPM number to it. And that's why we say it's kind of works like a tiebreaker when maybe you have two roads that have like a similar benefit, but one of them, we recognize that has critical facilities on it, or has a greater social or economic importance, and so it gets a little bit of a bump in the system.
Commissioner Barrett?
I have a question then. So if I'm looking at the top page and the bottom page, you're taking the local roads that our residents would live on and giving them a one. Is that correct?
Well, this is, remember I said the numbers are in yellow?
From the chart that you have given us, you're taking the local residential roads and giving them a one.
No, ma'am. The numbers are in yellow because they are subject to discussion of this board.
No, no, no. From your chart, from whatever group you got it from. If I'm reading the chart properly, the local roads, which would be our residential roads, in this chart have been given the number one.
The numbers that you see here were adopted by a neighboring agency, and I'll give you, their network is about 52% local roads, and they opted to give it a one.
Right. So if I'm reading this properly, the one that's associated with number one would be, and it's not our county, it's local roads.
Yes, ma'am.
And this chart is given a one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's why I want to make sure I'm understanding, you know, how, you know, I know it's not our county. Okay? But I want to make sure that I'm being able to read this properly, because it's frustrating, but that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it properly.
So remember, it's that one, right, that value, multiplied by?
By the 60% or the 40%?
The 60%.
Yep.
Plus, if that road is local, but maybe it has a school on it, or maybe it has a school and it is?
Hospital.
A hospital. It'll also get that, the benefit of that priority added to it.
That's correct. Okay. But what if it's a county road or a state road, and that's what the priority is on? In other words, if, say, you're looking at a hospital, and it's on a state road, what kind of a priority does that get?
Well, your state roads aren't analyzed as part of your network because you're not responsible for them.
Okay, so our major hospitals are on state roads. So they wouldn't get in any category whatsoever in the yellow.
No, ma'am, because they're not part of your, they're not part of your inventory. They're not on your network.
That makes one thing easy. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Easy point of clarification question on this chart, arterials, the percentage of the network mileage, that's mileage driven, in other words, how heavily used it is, not percentage of miles of roads that we have.
I'm not sure if I follow, you're asking like, what constitutes a collector?
The arterials.
The arterials?
It says arterials are a minimum percentage of the network mileage. Is that traffic mileage or road mileage?
No, the functional classification of mileage in your inventory, I think it's like a 3% right now are classified as arterials. It's road mileage.
It's road mileage, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified.
Okay. All right. So, again, the numbers in yellow are the numbers that are adopted, or are used currently by some of your neighboring counties, but are subject to discussions by you and your staff, you know, obviously, or if you feel comfortable with them, then, you know, they can be adopted. And so then, that's why, when we're showing the maximum priority score, we're leaving it right now to calculate, because subject to the discussions that you may have, they might not be what has been adopted by other counties. Okay. So, I mean, in terms of what we wanted to present to you, that's pretty much it. Obviously, you know, we're here to address any questions or concerns that you have at this point.
So I thought this was a great presentation, and maybe it's more staff-driven, but what have we done, the collector roads or the arterial roads? Do we have that information? Has the, and I know residential roads are going to take a lot longer, but I don't know where we're at in the process. Is there, have the arterial and the collector roads been analyzed at this point?
So let me give you a little snapshot of where we are in terms of the project. The payment condition survey has been completed. It has gone through the company's data quality process. We also are doing an additional quality process to make sure that the information, the final delivery that they give us, meets all the requirements that we need to be absorbed by, consumed by the software correctly. And then it meets the parameters of two products that the county will have, one of them is called the Data Quality Management Plan, the DQMP, and the Data Dictionary. These two documents are going to be guidelines that the county has adopted for the methodology that it's using. And so regardless of the vendor that you may have in the future doing the data collection, they will be tied to the quality parameters in those two documents. So that helps guarantee, or helps give you a better sense of consistency regardless of who the vendor is over time. So we're in the process of doing the final QC of the data they have to absorb it. Once we have that, and Scott, you might be able to give us a little bit more information, once we have that, we're actually going to give you a snapshot of where you are in condition right now. That's the next part of the process. In the meantime, we've already gathered the pieces of configuration that we've had during the discovery sessions with your staff, so that once we, Trimble gives us access to your platform, we'll begin configuring the software with the decision trees, right, as they finally be adopted. The deterioration models that Erin mentioned, the treatments that you use, the unit costs, all that information will be configured into the software. That'll happen over the course of summer. Towards late summer, early fall, the system will be live, and at that point, we're going to be able then to do these analyses for you, and give you real data, where you are right now in condition, what is like, you know, the optimized work plan that is suggested. From here to there, we might have discussions with you of when we get that first snapshot of the condition now in early summer. Maybe you guys decide, you know, well, we want to aim for X percent of the network in certain condition. Well, we'll be able to do the detailed analysis when the software is up and live in late fall, and give you the hard numbers like we saw in the examples. What does that really mean dollar-wise? And what happens to the PCI if, you know, if it's less or if it's more? All those kinds of dynamics, we'll be able to give you the specifics of those late summer, early fall.
Very good. Board? Commissioner Finnegan?
So we, sorry. So we as a board, and thank you, I also thought it was a great presentation, and especially as you explained it, explain the slides much better. So for our county, we need to vote, I guess, on the multipliers, or decide if we like these multipliers, or decide if, I guess Public Works would have a lot to say about that. I didn't know if they already talked to you about the multipliers?
So, I mean, what we're showing you right now on the slides is sort of the consensus in the discussions that we've had with staff of the decision trees, the treatments, options that they feel are most appropriate for the county, and given your business practices. So they did want to get your feedback on those. So one would be, look at the decision trees, look at those treatment options, are they really what you want? Consider the contracts that you have in place. Like I said, you do have preservation contracts in place, but not, you know, there are tools that you have in your toolbox, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to use all the tools. Some agencies do, some agencies don't. And the other one was a network multipliers. The staff did want to bring those numbers to you, they felt that they're reasonable, and they seem to be working for neighboring agencies, but they did want to bring those to you for discussion, to see if you were amicable to those, or if you wanted to tweak them some, or just adopt them as they are.
So the thing, unless I'm missing something, because I wanted to listen to you more than look at every little detail on the decision trees, but I noticed on some slides, if we're talking about the decision trees, and they're going to be put in a system and staff's going to be using them, I think we need to reevaluate how we're using the greater than and less than signs, because like, just flipping on the last one, on page 42 of 48, like it'll say pavement age greater than or equal to 10 years do nothing. I think that's backwards. And the one above it, pavement age less than 10 years, and then, and I feel like I saw that on a few of them, like, I think they're using the greater than and less than sign backwards.
I could talk about that one. One of the things about, you're seeing like multiple trees here, they're all kind of focused on certain things, like cracking and the age and all that kind of thing. They're all, if you think about it this way, when a roadway passes through these trees, it's passing through all of them to get to a recommendation out of each tree. And so in this case, say, for instance, the age tree, we get to that greater than 10 years, it says do nothing. It's more than likely, if it's greater than 10 years old, it has cracking, and it's likely recommending a mill and overlay or some other kind of treatment that's being done. What we're really getting to here in the age tree is like, once I get to a certain point, age shouldn't be the reason why I'm recommending something specifically. I want to go look at the conditions, so I'm actually deferring out of the age tree to just, it's going to create sort of like a hierarchy in the treatment recommendations. The heavier the treatment, the more likely the one to be recommended out. If I have four trees, the one with the heaviest treatment is going to be the one that's recommended for that roadway, because it's going to meet all the needs of all the trees, if that makes sense. So it might seem like it's a little backwards, and that specific instance, especially, that's why I said the age tree is a little bit strange in the sense that there's places where age itself shouldn't be the reason for the recommendation. It's specifically to target those early time periods for preservation right after a treat.
That makes better sense. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, first of all, I'll just echo the comments of my colleagues, excellent presentation. I enjoyed walking through each slide of it in preparation for today, and you did a wonderful job explaining it. I look forward to the conversation by this board, what those multipliers end up looking like, you know, what are our priorities for addressing our road situation? I will want to have a conversation, a public conversation with staff about, are we, the specs that we're using to resurface our roads? Are these DOT specs? Are we setting the bar higher? Are we doing more than is required at a more costly price tag? You know, are we using recycled material that's permitted? Are we using the right amount of recycled material that's allowed by DOT, so that we can stretch our resurfacing dollars further? You know, are we using more of the high polymer mix on roads that we don't necessarily need to? Again, at a higher price tag. So that's part of the conversation. I hope staff is hearing this, that that's what I want to hear as well. I don't want to do naturally anything less than DOT standards, but let's not set the bar any higher than DOT standards, so that we can stretch these dollars and get to more of our residential roads that need our attention. Thank you again. I look forward to the coming presentations as we move through summertime.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Davis?
So I would be really interested to hear from staff on these numbers, the multipliers and so forth, if there was any, anything that you weren't sure of, or discussion within our team, if maybe they wanted us to weigh in on that. To my mind, this is a really specific skillset that is, we're supposed to be up here to set policy, and I think we're going to have our hands full with funding levels, funding sources, and percentage allocated to rebuild versus maintain. So I think the folks that are experts in this, I'd really be interested in anything that was of question.
I won't speak for the staff specifically, but I will just say that you likely won't have a lot of the detail until you start seeing output, right? And so just keep in mind that even though like these priority multipliers will be in place, and they may be a starting point to get us going on the analysis, you're likely going to get much better sense of what's going on once you see the actual recommended projects. And then you're going to start saying, okay, this is where I want to, I think this is why we need to adjust this number up and bring this number down. So it's, yeah, it is a bit of a unique skillset, I guess, so to speak. It's, you know, so, but usually, doing it with some knowledge, doing it with that information at your hands is going to be a lot easier, I think. And it is something that you likely will, might want to pilot at first, get some feedback, and it'd be something that might change over time, so you do, so you can dial those numbers in, because it isn't going to be like, you're going to be like, yeah, 2.4, that's the number for that one, you know? It's not that specific.
And let's put that in concrete.
Right, exactly.
Or excuse me, asphalt.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly. So you are going to need to probably see some output first, get some information under your belt, and then be able to go from there to make those decisions.
That makes perfect sense. Not all counties are the same.
And to that point that Erin just mentioned, as part of the process, when we, when the software is configured, we'll be doing a period of calibration, we'll be running analyses, and seeing if what comes back makes sense. And we have found cases where, you know, even staff, when we see the initial results, it's like, why is it picking that on that road? Like, your staff knows your roads better than anybody else, and they'll question, and they'll push, like, why is it doing that? And then we'll go back at the decision trees and say, oh, because we did this, well, maybe we need to tweak here a little bit more. So that's why I said, the system isn't set in stone. This is a starting point of configuration, but during that calibration, and even maybe during your first, you know, couple of years, you're going to learn more from the system, you're going to get more data, and you might find that you'll change some of those decision parameters.
How, the neighboring county that you did this analysis on, how close are they in the number of miles and road conditions and network that you believe would compare to us?
So they're actually two counties. One of them is Polk County, which has a paved network of about 2,500 miles, and Hillsborough, which has?
3,700.
3,700. They're relatively close. In terms of composition, your network reminds me more of Polk's. We have, you know, a lot of wide open spaces, a lot of rural roads that are, a large percent of your network that is local, classified as local. So the composition is somewhat comparable. And soil cement roads, you seem to face some of the similar obstacles and challenges that they do.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Barrett?
Okay. As I'm going through this and listening to all this, you set it out pretty nicely, and I was really happy because I read through this, and I understood what they were saying. That's why I asked about the local roads. Now, with all the new construction that we are going to be having, not the PUDs that got approved that are going to take between five and 10 years to actually get here, but construction in the areas that we are already platted and people are building. Okay. Those are on some of the roads that have been repaved, and now, you're going to have to redo and redo and redo, probably on a yearly or bi-yearly basis, to see how the road is, because you've had all this traffic driving on it, building houses, construction, you know, cement trucks and all that other good stuff. My question is, with all of this, getting it redone and redone, how much is it going to cost us on a yearly or bi-yearly basis for to have someone come out and redo the roads? Because, you know, that's not free.
No, ma'am, nothing is free. I'm going to take my Mont McDonald hat off for a second, and I'm going to put on my former Polk County pavement manager hat on. The pavement management system, ideally in a county, does not work in a vacuum. You should be collaborating with other departments within your own county, like land development, right? And so in the case of Polk County, we ran into similar challenges, like what you're saying, and even utilities, like, we'd come and do a road, and utilities would come in, ooh, fresh asphalt. They'd like, it's like we identified the spot for them to come in and put in something. So as part of our pavement management program, we branched out and we reached out to other county departments that we needed to collaborate with them. In the terms of, in the case of land development, we ran into similar situations as what you're mentioning. You know, we had a freshly paved road, or recently paved road, there's a development going up on it, a lot of heavy vehicles going in, going out, the edge of pavement would be damaged. Well, in our case, in the case of Polk County, land development held the developer responsible for any damage. developer responsible for any damages that happened within the construction limits, you know, the road, the frontage road of their development projects. And they would, their inspectors would bring those to our attention. Or sometimes my inspectors would be out and see something and say, hey, you know, something happened here. We even had a case where, for example, the waste management company had a hydraulic spill in an entire subdivision. Their garbage truck spewed hydraulic fluid throughout the entire subdivision. And we had to go in and do a surface treatment on this road, but we held them responsible for it ultimately. We did it. We did the work. We had to do the work, but they footed the bill. We brought it to them and they footed the bill. So, these are our connections and other situations that ideally the county wants to start, goodness gracious, that's an English word, fostering that collaboration between the different departments because the payment management doesn't happen in a vacuum.
All right. We don't have concurrency, so we can't hold developers. However, we also, in my district, everything is platted and I've got at least 15, 16 different builders that are working at the same time. And we're putting in a significant amount of houses because that is one of the areas that is growing. I'm not talking about one where we approved a, you know, a PUD and they're just going to be coming out onto our main road. You know, they maintain their roads in their PUD. And, you know, that I can understand, but I'm talking about areas where I've got three houses that were built by me, okay? And they're like in a small little area. You go four blocks away and you got four houses built. And they're in all residential that have already been approved years ago. So, we have nobody to actually go to unless it's that individual builder. And they do, you know, they do, I guess they tell us that they did damage, but I don't think they do. So, we're going to have to be going out on at least a yearly or, you know, every two year basis to see where new roads that we have just fixed are now damaged due to their heavy duty equipment.
I think the recommendation typically is every three to five years, you can go back and resurvey your network. So, give you a timeframe. Let's say you did it every three years. There is a, there is an investment in that. There's a significant cost that goes along with that. But when you've got a, what was the number?
1.3 billion?
1.3 billion dollar asset, you know, you can spend a little bit of money investing in that condition assessment of that road, of that whole network. It also reminded me in Hillsborough, and I know it's probably not the exact same situation, but they had a lot of borrow pits being permitted down in Hillsborough. And that became a big issue for them because the borrow pit trucking operations just destroyed some roads. And they actually went out and they tried to do some intermediate surveys on those local areas that were, they knew were getting really damaged to try and recoup some of those costs back. But even if they can't recoup the costs, we can look at that and say, well, how are those roads deteriorating? They may be deteriorating faster than we want them to, but at least we'll be able to document that. And, you know, this network gets, will get rerun, this analysis will get rerun several times a year. So, you'll be able to account for that type of deterioration.
Chair, for the record, can we please get his name?
I think he said it earlier. Oh, can you come back up?
I'm sorry. Scott Stevens with Mont McDonald.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Barrett, to talk a little bit about the damage that you're talking about when these houses are constructed. So, through the process of inspecting that home, one of the final inspections is a driveway inspection. So, let's just say we had a house recently where they didn't want to clear the entire lot. They wanted to keep a lot of it wooded. So, the area where the driveway was going to go is where every truck came in and out of that parcel. And they did a significant amount of damage to the roadway. So, when we came in for that inspection of the driveway, that damage was identified. And then, the developer or the builder of that home was held accountable and had to do repairs to that road. So, we keep our eye on it.
I know you keep your eye on it, but I also know that the driveway is the one that they inspected. However, on the way to the driveway, I've called in to get potholes done and fixed because the driver of this truck dug up the road, the driver. And then, on top of that, the garbage trucks dug up more of it. So, you couldn't associate it with that exact house and that exact developer.
Right.
So, that's why I'm wondering, how often are we going to go back and assess, or do we wait till the person moves in the house and they call in and say, hey, I got all these big potholes?
Yeah, we do our best during construction, but again, as they mentioned, the assessment's going to have to be done every so many, so many years, two to three years.
And that's what I wanted to ask. How much is it going to cost us? What percentage of our road maintenance is going to go to that cost every time we turn around?
Okay. We'll get that information and bring it to you because that would be a three year down the road period. So, we'll have to estimate how much that would run.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
On that point, I can tell you what your current, what it currently costs you to do this survey was, and that cost includes two years of access to their software where you can view the data as well. It was 310, $310,000. $249,000 of that was the actual survey. And like I said, processing the data. And then, the additional are the three years of having access to the website where you can go in. It's almost like a Google Street View. You can go in, look at the road. You see the images recorded by that. And that is optional. I mean, if at some point down the line, the county doesn't want that portion, that's obviously something that you can choose to do. But the data collection part of the damage was about $250,000. And if you, recommendation like is roughly between every three years to five years. So, you're looking at roughly about 100,000, no, less than 100,000 a year for your data survey. The other thing I want to point out is that in that data survey, you also have the option of, the vans capture a lot more assets along your roadways, sidewalks, curb and gutters, things that maybe the county doesn't have an active inventory right now. And your public works staff has expressed interest in down the line, learning more about those assets. So, there's an added value component to it that you could, obviously for additional costs, they could extract the data of those additional assets from, from the data when they capture it for the pavements.
Very good. Anyone else? Mr. Howard?
Other than, it's exciting. I think, I think I gave that number before. And if you look at the percentage, it's so little what you're spending on a billion dollar asset. And when I crisscross the county doing speaking engagements, if you had that kind of a portfolio, you're going to spend some money to make sure you know what you've got. Oftentimes, I kind of pick on Commissioner Cannard a little bit and talk about his business model, what he does. Most likely, maybe he doesn't do this, but if you go into a chiropractor or other doctors, they're going to take an x-ray at some point. Sometimes they're good and they don't have to do that. But that's what we're really doing. We're x-raying all these roadway systems to see what's the best way to use the taxpayers' money. If you see you have a bigger ROI if you do this the right way, making better decisions with better data, and that's just the way to go. It's the best practice. And, you know, I compliment Mont McDonald because originally when they came to me, they said, Steve, this is really about a four-year process. And I said, that's not going to work. We got to go quicker, faster, more efficient. And they're going to try to deliver this in probably about 14 months, which is really amazing compared to our peers. So, I want to compliment all the good work they're doing as well. And also, all the good work you did in Polk County. And I'm familiar with that because I worked there for five years with that government. So, a lot of similarities that you see here. So, again, I compliment the Board of County Commissioners. You're going to get a big ROI on this investment. And it really is, it's an expense, but it's also an investment for the future of this roadway system. And actually, we're really doing something proactively and that's really important. And our staff needs all the tools we can get. These are really good tools to have. But at the same time, you still have to have a human touch with these programs and we have that flexibility. So, thank this board and thank Mont McDonald and our staff for all the good work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we're going to open it up to the public. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward.
I'm Mark Saveska. I live on North Wagon Point in Beverly Hills, hereto, hereto, and excuse me, in Pine Ridge, here to represent the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge. Really, real, five minutes, please. Really, really good start to this. There's a lot of goodness in what's been presented here. It's scientific. It's repeatable. You can project into the future. You can run excursions. You can look at different, I guess my time's up. You can look at different, different opportunities to look at different things. And the idea of maintaining that caution, nothing's chiseled in stone until you start looking at when all the data is available to you. And you put that, does it make common sense on that? Also encouraged by the line of questioning from the commissioners because it reemphasizes a lot of some of the concerns that, in opportunities, because there are both sides of that coin there that are available to us moving forward. If we could, we'd ask that you consider four refinements or what was briefed as constraints on analysis moving forward. And I'm going to kind of touch on each of these. The first is prioritize roads and allocate money by district. We used to do that. It came off the website. You remind, I'm reminding of the presentation of the, what I did during the capital improvement program, that it came off the website. I don't know why that occurred, but that helps get rid of some of the bias against the condition in District Three where you have the most roads, the most people, but the worst roads because models like this tend to have a bias against that for any number of reasons. Second thing to consider is the need to protect investment to keep roads from falling out of the mill and repave and falling down into the full depth reclamation. That's a small chunk of PCI value, but a fourfold increase in cost to recapture those roads or work the backlog on that. That's the second point. For those roads that are scoped or plan to be scoped, min-maintenance on those roads, completely obvious, not in the briefing, but something that needs to be considered. If they're going to get scoped or we're planning on scoping them, we don't need to be spending a lot of county money on redoing those roads if they're going to be in that list. And finally, data-driven decisions. What a great title because this approach allows us to do a lot of that, to use real data. And as we start looking at classification and functional classification of roads using traffic count, the county does a marvelous job of capturing that traffic count. But we need to use that information to identify what the functional piece of that is. If I can take you to page 23 of 48 in the, in the actual presentation, the agenda packet, I'm going to offer to you, one of the reasons why you need to maintain the allocation by district is if you look at this benefit, you've got regular mill and pave, and then you've got the, the open grade that you have to do. So, if I have $2 to spend, I hit the mill and grade twice, I get a significant increase. But I can only spend that $2 one time on the open, on the open grade. And so, that's the bias. That's the inherent bias that is already in the system. So, the way to overcome that, that we're confident we can overcome that, is by maintaining the allocation by district. Bring your attention to page 11 of 48 in the agenda packet. Again, a marvelous slide here. But here's where we get into the example of a 30-point decrease in PCI. We'll take something from a millon and pave all the way down to a full depth reclamation. 30-point change in PCI, a fourfold increase in what it takes to get that backlog back up. So, that's why it's important to make sure that your roads don't fall off of that. Whatever those numbers are, we'll have some actual data coming out later this year on that one. Number three, I'd like to take you to slide number 35 of 48. This needs to be synchronized with the capital improvement program and the budget. Right now, we've got four lines of funding that go to this, to these different things, and how you're going to address that, what money goes into what pot for what. And there were a lot of options that were, that were provided to that. Onto the network priority multiplier. The devil's always in the details on that. And when we start summing this up, we start looking at functional class. And I'll just highlight, as you go on to page 45, functional class, for example, collectors, arterials and local collectors. The minor collectors in Pine Ridge have more traffic volume than some of the arterials in the, in the county. In fact, all of our, all of our minor collectors have a higher volume than the arterial that exists in, in North, excuse me, North Forest Ridge, just as an example. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate all that you've done for us. And I'm really encouraged by all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. So, I'm Harold Walker. And I wondered if the, if the company, if you're a paving company, how much do they look at these results? So, if you show up into place and you're paving and they go, what about this road? Oh, we're going to get that road next year. And they're like, we're here. We're right. We have all the guys here. We have all the equipment right here. You're going to get that one next year. And you're like, okay. So, I didn't know if they looked at roads from an optimization of saying, hey, we can do two or three roads in this area while we're here. Because I don't know what the cost is for a paver to show up to get all the equipment, all the guys there and all that stuff. Because in my area, they paved Union. And I sent a letter to Steve, I think, and said, hey, school is right there. He go, we're going to get that next year. I'm like, gosh, dog. If the guys go, man, I'm right. I'm right. It's, you see that road right here? We're driving on to get here. So, I don't know if the county and the, the system being a data-driven, if there's a way to optimize that where people show up and find out what the, what the break even point is to say, man, if you could let me do that road, if that road's not scheduled for next year or the two years, how can that go back into the system and be optimized to say, we got more points here? And I don't know what the break even point for a paving company is. I don't know if they show up and go, we got to charge you more because I got to get all the guys there. But it's just something for the county to consider when you're, when you're there to do that. I had, my nephew was having some plumbing work done. And while the glue was drying, I said, hey, that, didn't that toilet flange to be fixed? And the plumber went in, did it, didn't charge him any time, just charged him for the parts. He goes, why? Because he was already there, waiting for the glue to dry. So, it's just something for the county to consider. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is that something that you all can, please?
Yeah, Erin, again, thanks. That's a good, good point. We actually are considering, economies of scale. Essentially, if you have to mobilize a paving crew over to a location, it's ideal to try to get them working in that, in a lot of areas in that location. So, you're only paying for that one, the county's only paying for that one time, or at least paying a lower amount. So, yeah, we're looking at that. We actually do have a group, a grouping mechanism in the data that allows us to say, this area of the county should go together. If a project's going to get recommended, do this area as well. We also have some other kinds of analyses we can run that can look more at like geographically, how it might combine those projects together. So, that is absolutely one of the things that we do recommend as well. It's kind of like a level deeper and it is an important part of it because it all becomes down to cost at the end of the day.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we're going to close open to the public. Is there any additional comments by staff? Board?
I, I agree. I have a lot of cul-de-sacs in my district. And the roads that are getting to the cul-de-sacs are getting paved, but the cul-de-sac isn't. And I've had people contact me, you know, they did this road, they did this road, and they left this one out. Or I have a lot of dead ends where I've got two or three roads going in and then the back road isn't getting done. How are those being addressed in your system?
Well, I think that's what he just said, is that they're going to put that into a system and look at them. All right. Seeing nothing else, we're going to stand adjourned until our 1 a.m. meeting. Thank you for, for 1 p.m. Yeah.